Good evening and welcome to tonight's Community Town Hall hosted by the Jefferson County Board of Commissioners. I'm Amber Reese and we'll be helping, I'll be helping to facilitate tonight's discussion with Commissioners Leslie Dahl-Kemper, Andy Kerr, and Tracy Crafttharp. We also have several subject matter experts joining us as well. If you want subtitles in another language, you can do that at the bottom of your screen by selecting closed captioning and your preferred language. As we head into the winter months, our focus tonight is really on severe cold weather. We plan to focus on three topics while also answering questions submitted by the community. Those topics include severe weather sheltering, snow removal, and the county's CDL driver shortage. We invite you to submit questions you might have for county leadership. Although tonight's discussion will focus on those three main topics, please feel free to ask any county issues that are important to you. If you have a question, please submit it in the chat now. You do need to join us via a computer to submit a question through the chat. Our team will make note of your question and we'll call on you to ask your question. So please submit your question in the chat now if you have one, and you're also welcome to just listen in. Now, before we send it over to Commissioner Dahl-Kemper to kick off tonight's discussion, we want to survey those listening on several county-related subjects. To participate, please choose your answer under the polling question on your screen. Survey question number one, how satisfied are you with snow removal in Jefferson County? You have several options: very satisfied, somewhat satisfied, neither satisfied nor unsatisfied, and not satisfied. Please select your answer now. We'll have a few more questions throughout the town hall, so stick around to make sure your voice is heard. Now let's turn it over to Commissioner Dahl-Kemper.
Thanks so much, Amber. I'm Leslie Dahl-Kemper and I represent District Three or South Jefferson County, which includes Littleton, Morrison, Conifer, Evergreen, and portions of Lakewood. And we want to welcome you to tonight's telephone town hall. Thanks so much for joining us. Before we jump into our discussion around severe weather, I'd first like to acknowledge the recent passing of ballot measure 1A, and we want to express our sincere gratitude to Jeffco voters for putting their trust in Jefferson County. The passing of ballot measure 1A will allow the county to retain revenue collected to help fund public safety as well as transportation and infrastructure needs, both of which are relevant to tonight's conversation. This will have a positive impact on our community for decades to come. So thanks again, Jeffco voters, for your support of 1A. Now, let's talk about severe weather. Commissioner Kerr, Crafttharp, and I, along with Jeffco leaders, are collaborating to address homelessness, particularly sheltering during severe weather events as winter approaches. And last year, I had an opportunity to tour the nonprofit Recovery Works Navigation Center, which is right off of West Colfax Avenue. And the center is truly transformational for the people that it serves, including the capacity to shelter 75 guests during severe weather events. Identifying funding for these critical needs in our community reflected the power of partnership. And my fellow commissioners and I set aside $3 million in federal funding to help support the city of Lakewood and the navigation centers. And we also have $3 million set aside to help support needs in Arvada. Navigation centers like Recovery Works provide a one-stop shop for people without a home who need a myriad of resources and services to regain housing stability. On the coldest of nights, it also provides a safe place for our most vulnerable to escape life-threatening elements. Carrie Rennick, who is our Regional Homelessness Coordinator for Jefferson County, joins us tonight to discuss severe weather sheltering, particularly the collaborative efforts with our city and county leadership. We recognize last spring there was a need for enhanced response due to the closure of the Severe Weather Shelter Network. Just a quick reminder for those of you who are listening, if you have a question, please submit your question in the chat. Carrie, thanks so much for joining us tonight.
Thank you, Commissioner Dahl-Kemper. As severe weather events become more frequent and intense, it's vital to provide support for those in our community who may be affected, particularly those experiencing homelessness. We have worked closely with cities and municipalities to ensure there is a coordinated response in providing shelter, safety, and essential services during severe and extreme cold weather conditions. Jefferson County Public Health will issue a health advisory notice when the threshold of 32 degrees Fahrenheit or lower with accumulations of precipitation greater than one inch or 20 degrees Fahrenheit or lower with or without precipitation. Public Health will issue a health alert notice when the expected forecast reaches 10 degrees Fahrenheit or below. A National Weather Service 72-hour forecast for the Lakewood area will be the authority source of this information and monitored by Jefferson County Public Health and Jefferson County Emergency Manager. The Public Health notifications will activate severe weather response.
Carrie, thanks so much. I'm wondering if you could talk more about what resources such as emergency shelters, warming centers are available throughout the county during a severe weather event?
During severe and extreme weather, local shelters open to provide warmth and safety. Jefferson County Public Libraries will offer shelter and assistance, with many library branches across Jefferson County serving as daytime warming centers, providing a safe and warm space for individuals during frigid temperatures. Jefferson County is fortunate to have several sheltering options to ensure the safety and well-being of our unhoused individuals. Lakewood's severe weather shelter at Recovery Works is located at 8,000 West Colfax Avenue in Lakewood. It is a pet-friendly with no registration required. Their hours of operations will be from 7:00 PM to 7:00 AM. Evergreen Christian Outreach Shelter, or ECHO, is located in Evergreen and offers overnight emergency shelter every night from mid-October through April. Anyone seeking shelter needs to first register with the case manager to complete a background check. They can reach the main ECHO office at area code 303-670-1796, and the shelter is open from 6:15 PM to 7:00 AM. Arvada's Church-Based Shelter, hosted at the Rising Church, is another resource available to those in need. From November 2024 through March 2025, Mission Arvada will open its church doors when temperatures drop to 20 degrees Fahrenheit or below, or when snowfall exceeds six inches, providing a warm, safe night of refuge for up to 40 adults 18 or older. To register, guests need to sign up at Mission Arvada anytime from 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM, Monday through Friday. Guests can call the phone number, area code 720-334-8584, to confirm activation on a particular night. Arvada's Church-Based Shelter is located at 7,500 West 57th Avenue, Arvada, Colorado, and operating from 6:00 PM to 7:00 AM. Jefferson County is in the process of purchasing mobile shelters that will be activated when temperatures reach 10 degrees Fahrenheit or below. Locations for deployment of these mobile shelters will be predetermined in partnership with the county and municipalities.
Thanks so much, Carrie. Those examples you gave are really a good indicator of the collaborative efforts between the county, our cities, our nonprofit partners, and our faith-based community. And it's so good to know that those services are available for those in need. We also have additional sheltering resources that the county will provide as well.
Yes, we do. Jefferson County provides motel vouchers for families with children during severe and extreme weather. We've partnered with local nonprofits and Jeffco schools to issue these vouchers. Additionally, homeless navigators across Jefferson County, its cities and service providers issue severe weather motel vouchers to eligible unhoused clients. Determinations are based on vulnerability with conditions that limit access to congregate shelter due to health conditions or other qualifying circumstances.
Besides sheltering, what organizations offer services for those experiencing homelessness?
So some of those organizations would include Recovery Works, Homeless Navigation Center, Colorado Safe Parking Initiative, Colorado Coalition for the Homeless, Jeffco Human Services, Family Tree, The Salvation Army, Catholic Charities of Denver, Mile High United Way, St. Francis Center, Mission Arvada, Jeffco Public Schools, and Bayard Enterprises provides workforce programs.
Let's talk a little bit about the importance of food assistance, too, for families who are in need. Which agencies would you mention that offer food to community members?
Sure. We know that access to food and basic supplies is essential during severe weather. The following will offer food assistance: Arvada's Community Table, ECHO Shelter Food Pantry, Mean Street Ministry, The Action Center, Benefits in Action, Food Bank of the Rockies, and Recovery Works located in Lakewood.
Yeah, we are so grateful to have these nonprofits in Jefferson County who do incredible work every day to help our neighbors who are in need. How can people help those experiencing homelessness during severe weather?
We do truly appreciate people wanting to help those in need. If you want to help, you can always donate to local shelters or provide essential supplies like blankets, socks, non-perishable food. You can also volunteer at many of these organizations. Just please remember that all donations, big or small, go a long ways.
Thanks so much. Thanks so much, Carrie. I want to remind everyone that it's important to stay informed during severe weather, and we encourage everyone to sign up to receive notifications from Jefferson County Emergency Alerts, National Weather Service Alerts, and Heading Home. This year, we also launched a page on our website, jeffco.us, dedicated to severe cold weather and resources. If you have a question, please submit a question in the chat. Now, let's take some time to address questions and concerns from the community.
Thank you, Commissioner Dahl-Kemper. Our first question is for you, Commissioner Dahl-Kemper, as well as Carrie. Is the county planning to provide cold weather shelters?
You know, we did touch on that just a moment ago in terms of really talking in more depth about the criteria that we use for cold weather shelter. Is there anything more that you'd like to add that you think we didn't talk about a little bit earlier?
I would just reiterate the opportunity for motel vouchers for both families and singles. That is funded through county dollars, and then as well as the extreme weather mobile shelters that we are preparing to set up.
Great. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Our next question is, with 1A passing, will Jefferson County allocate more resources to combat homelessness?
I'll just mention upfront, when it comes to 1A funding, the Board of County Commissioners is working with our county team to determine what the process will be, which will engage our community, county leaders, our nonprofit leaders, and others who are working on this issue, including representatives from our cities, to really think through what that potentially could look like. But no decisions have been made at this time. Right now, we're beginning to design the process. Remember that 1A funding goes to two categories in particular: infrastructure, which includes everything from roads and bridges and more, as well as public safety. So more to come on that front.
Thank you, Commissioner Dahl-Kemper. We have a question from Jody to our commissioners involving 1A and funding for these expenses and our budget. Jody, would you like to ask your question?
Hello?
Hi, Jody. Can you ask your question?
Yes, I was very concerned of the deceptive language that you got this 1A ballot issue proposed to the voters, that many people are so very disappointed in the fact that they're losing their labor, which in turn, the refund that they would have gotten does raise taxes by you keeping that money. How are you going, it was so shameful. How are you going to propose and inform these people of the usage of this budget? It was very discouraging to so many voters.
Jody, thank you so much for your question. I really, really appreciate it. As I mentioned a moment ago, we're working now on a process to determine how best to engage our community around the two designated areas for 1A funding. And we really want to thank our Jeffco voters who supported 1A. We were one of the few remaining counties that still had not removed those revenue caps, and now we're able to reinvest dollars over those caps right back into essential county services, which is good for our community and good for our quality of life. Also, I'd like to point out that the ballot language called for a Citizens Advisory Committee, and we're very excited about pulling together this group as well. We'll have more information on how our community can get involved in that effort, and really look forward to hearing more from all of you on these very issues.
Thank you, Commissioner Dahl-Kemper. Our next question is from Natalie, also asking a question about 1A. Natalie, can you ask your question? Natalie, are you there? Alrighty. Natalie, I'm just going to ask your question for you. So Natalie asked, how could voters make an informed decision on the issue 1A when the county additionally left blank and didn't notify voters about the fiscal impacts?
We're going to turn that one over to our county attorney, Kim Sorrels, on 1A.
Thank you for your question. The county was not required to do a fiscal statement on this ballot measure because it was not raising taxes or adding a new tax. It was simply a revenue retention measure. And for that reason, under Colorado law, we were not required to provide any additional information in the ballot question itself. However, the county had provided information about what the anticipated refund would be that it was collecting when it passed the resolution sending this to ballot.
Thank you. Our next question is for Commissioner Dahl-Kemper. When will the county begin to allocate funds retained through 1A?
Thanks so much. We know, we've got with us Dan Conway, who is our interim Chief Financial Officer, and we know that we'll have a more accurate number, I believe, sometime in the spring. And I'm wondering, Dan, if you can fill us in a little bit more on that process, the timeline, and any additional information you think might be important.
Absolutely. Thank you, Commissioner. So the way we determine how much money we're able to retain after the end of 2024 is by first closing out the prior fiscal year, which does take a few months to close out all those financials. But the primary factor is we need to wait till the final Consumer Price Index, or CPI, figure is released by the state, and that typically is not published until at least March or April. So while we're aiding to determine what that exact value is, as Commissioner Dahl-Kemper mentioned, we will be busy developing a process to identify and utilize those potential retained dollars to make sure that they're following the intent of the ballot measure.
So please stay tuned for more information, because we want to make sure your voices are heard, too, as we think about how best to allocate those dollars in the designated categories we talked about earlier. We look forward to hearing your perspective on that, and we'll certainly, we certainly hope to begin that work before spring, as you heard Dan mention, through a process that is being designed now.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we're going to head to our next survey question. Please remember to submit all of your questions in the chat, and also be mindful that in order to submit a question, you have to be joining via your A computer. So the next survey question is, what are the primary ways that you receive information from and about Jefferson County? You have several options. They are the county website, social media, Engage Jeffco Newsletter, news media, word of mouth, and other. Please select the answer that you find most fitting on your screen, and we'll have one more question toward the end of tonight's discussion, so please hang on to the line. And now, Commissioner Kerr, I'll turn it over to you.
Great. Thank you, Amber. I'm Andy Kerr. I represent District Two, the central part of Jefferson County, including Wheat Ridge and parts of Lakewood, Golden, and Evergreen. With us today is Brian Knight, who we call BK, and he is joining us now to highlight the snow plowing procedures. And a quick reminder, if you have a question, please submit your question in the chat.
Thank you, Commissioner Kerr. Jefferson County Road and Bridge revised its snow removal procedure for the upcoming 2024-2025 winter season due to an ongoing statewide shortage of truck drivers. We want to share with you the revisions made to our snow removal procedures and the impacts of these revisions. We appreciate your understanding as we work through this staffing shortage. During large snow events, Road and Bridge has a recorded message for the public to share weather guidance and updates, because all of our staff are out plowing snow. If you have an emergency during a snowstorm, please call 911. Our biggest priority is to hire more CDL drivers and get those drivers trained to operate plow trucks. We do have some budget constraints in what we can offer for these positions, and we are doing everything we can to get these positions filled. The voter-approved 1A ballot measure for transportation and public safety will allow us to be more competitive by attracting more CDL drivers and complete critical infrastructure projects across the county. We are currently planning the transportation projects that will be shared with the Board of County Commissioners in the near future. It does take time to obtain a commercial driver's license, a CDL, and complete our training program. This process could take up to 18 months.
All good information to have. Thanks, BK, for all of that. So what revisions have been made to the snow removal procedure? And so what can our residents expect during a storm?
So the plowing and application of traction materials will take place in four phases during a storm. The order in which streets are plowed in each phase is based on the definition of priority. We have Priority One through Four. Priority One is our main arterial streets that provide for high-traffic volumes. Our Priority Two streets are major subdivision collectors, school zones, and school bus routes. Priority Three is then our residential and other local roads that carry moderate to low-traffic volumes. Lastly, our Priority Four are the cul-de-sacs and other dead-end roads carrying very low-traffic volumes. So to go into more depth on our policy, if the snow accumulations are six inches or less in the plains and melting is forecasted to occur within 72 hours, snow plowing will not occur on Priority Three and Four streets. As for the mountain areas of the county, snow plowing and application of traction materials will not take place from 9:00 PM to 3:00 AM. When snow depths are seriously impeding vehicle mobility and melting is not forecasted to occur within 72 hours, Priority Three and Four streets will be plowed.
All right, we're getting that straight. So there are four priorities levels for our streets, and there are four phases to a storm. Starting to get the, the number four is important to remember here. So then how does Road and Bridge, the Road and Bridge Division, deploy drivers in the event of a snowstorm?
So each operator is assigned a specific route for snow removal and application of traction materials. The assignment of roads to a route is determined by area supervisors based on the priority of the road, as I just mentioned, and the most efficient utilization of equipment.
All right. So we're getting down to the nitty-gritty here. So snow removal procedures are also broken up into the four phases of the storm that you mentioned. So how do you handle, how do you handle snow removal in these four phases?
To keep the theme of the four, so on Phase One is the initial opening of all Priority One and Two streets in that order. The severity of the storm may delay response time for Priority Two streets because the initial opening of major arterial streets requires that multiple lanes be plowed in each direction. For our Phase Two, the plowing and placement of traction materials on problem roads having steep inclines, curves, bridges, or overpasses, widening of any Priority One and Two streets deemed necessary, and repeat plowing of Priority One and Two streets initially opened as snow continues to accumulate. For Phase Three, the plowing and application of traction materials will occur on Priority Three streets where emergency service areas, places of worship, childcare centers, and assisted living facilities are located. For our Phase Four, the storm event is over. Continuation of widening operations to improve safe travel and prepare for additional accumulation during subsequent storms.
All right. So we have priorities one through three, we have phases, or one through four, phases one through four. So BK, if you can tell us, I think we all remember last March, the most significant snowfall that Jefferson County has seen in several decades. And I received so many compliments from people throughout Jefferson County on how your staff handled that snowstorm. I was, I was expecting people to not be so complimentary, but it sounds like things were actually handled pretty well. So how did the staffing shortage impact snow removal procedures, and, and your folks were able to adapt to that?
We appreciate that, first of all. Well, we were working around the clock. We didn't put down as much of the icing material, which was good, but everyone was in a machine or truck plowing snow, even the supervisors, because we've been so shorthanded. Each of our drivers is plowing multiple routes during a storm, and it takes a significant amount of time to complete these routes. We encourage everyone to review our revised snow removal procedures on the website.
Great. Thanks for that information, BK. Stick around, because I know Commissioner Crafttharp is going to be talking to you next. And just as a reminder, if you have a question, please submit your question in the chat. And now let's take some time to address questions and concerns from the Jeffco community.
Alrighty. Our next question is for Commissioner Kerr and BK, asking, where do cul-de-sacs fall in those priorities and phases of your plowing and snow removal procedures?
I know, I know the quick answer to that, Priority Four. But I'll let BK get into more details.
So those are our Priority Four, Phase Four roads. As I mentioned, if the snow isn't forecasted to melt, if we do get more than six inches, we will get to those. We just ask that you be patient. Like I said, we're short on truck drivers. They do get out there. It's just a matter of time before we get all the one-twos and threes done, but we will get to them.
And our next question is, how does the county ensure that critical infrastructure, roads, power, water, is functioning during severe weather? And again, this is for Commissioner Kerr, as well as BK.
Great. Thank you. You know, we have only been talking about mostly our roads and removing snow from our roads. But of course, our power lines, keeping people with the ability to, to stay powered up, and in some cases, heat their homes, is very important. Also making sure that people have water as well. So BK, we've, we've talked about keeping the roads open, but what about the other infrastructure like power? And also, I would imagine, fire rescue, emergency rescue, it's important all the way through with, with these storms.
So the nice part with JeffCom is we have direct communication with them. When we do have emergencies, they can reach out directly to us, so we can help get drivers out there, or any equipment we need to help get people through.
Great. I believe we also have, from our emergency prep division, Mr. Whittingham?
Good evening. Nate Whittington, Emergency Manager for Jefferson County. As BK mentioned, we have an interesting relationship when it comes to JeffCom and the nuances that come along with it. We also bring in Road and Bridge and the Emergency Operations Center. The other essential functions that we bring in are utilities, both from our public sector and our private sectors. So we have representatives within the EOC, the Emergency Operations Centers, from Excel, from Denver Water, that give us information as if we're seeing widespread power outages across the county, so that we can start relaying that information to the crews in the field, so we can get eyes on what's actually taking place, and how we can restore those functions as quickly as possible. Thank you.
We have another question for you, Nate, from Mindy Moore. Will the emergency mobile shelters be used just during extreme cold weather, or is the county also planning to use them in summer during extreme heat, during prolonged power outages, and during wildfires?
So that is actually a great question. That is one of the reasons we went to the system that we actually implemented throughout the county. It gives a county the versatility to respond and react to any kind of adversity that we may face. So yes, if we experience another So yes, if we experience another public safety power shut off like we did last year with Excel Energy, these tents would have the capability of being deployed in the field to offer cooling locations, but also charging locations for durable medical equipment, other resources and other equipment that Jefferson County community members may need.
Thank you. And our next question is for BK, a little, a question about a little more what your drivers are doing throughout those snowstorms. So what types of shifts are the drivers working?
So in a full deployment, our drivers, we work a three to three shift. That's one of the issues that we try and on our 3:00 AM to 3:00 PM shift, we, we have 144 plow routes. It takes, it takes 82 on the day shift. We have, so the math is a little weird, but on the day shift, we have 62 plow drivers. 20 are in graders. They're doing our steep mountainous roads, narrow roads up there. Then on our night shift is the 3:00 PM to 3:00 AM, and that's where our shortage falls in. So that's why we don't plow from 3:00, 9:00 PM to 3:00 AM in the evenings in the mountainous areas, and we run Segalton crews at night down in town.
Thank you all. We're going to turn over to our last survey question of the night. How easy do you feel it is to access resources from Jefferson County? Several options there, very easy, somewhat easy, neither easy nor difficult, somewhat difficult or very difficult. Please select your answer now. And again, thank you for participating in our survey questions tonight. For our final topic, I'll turn it over to Commissioner Crafttharp.
Thank you, Amber. I'm Tracy Crafttharp. I represent District One, which is the north area of the county. That includes Arvada, parts of Golden, parts of, and the Jefferson County part of Westminster. So Commissioner Kerr briefly touched on this, but I want to expand on it. Let's talk driver shortage. So how does driver shortage affect, impact the Road and Bridge Division? And Val Montoya, I think is here also, if you want to come up and help. If you could talk a little bit about that challenge. So a quick reminder to everybody, if you have a question, please submit your question in the chat. Mr. Knight and Mr. Montoya, can you, can you discuss why this shortage is happening?
Thank you so much for this, and Crafttharp.
Sure.
So as we've been discussing, this is a statewide shortage. Our department is definitely feeling the impacts. It's a very labor intensive and demanding job. The job also requires specific licensing and certifications, which take time. CDL drivers operate large, heavy vehicles and transport materials. To be able to do that type of work, a person needs a commercial driver's license. It takes time to obtain that type of license and become certified to operate our vehicles. I do want to mention, we, again implementing, we offer a remote location pay differential. That means different pay based on location. Our shops located in Coal Creek, Lookout Mountain, Indian Hills, Rachel, Evergreen, and Shakers Crossing are all paid in an additional 250 per hour due to those being mountainous areas. These groups are grateful for that extra pay.
Oh, I bet, I bet. It's very helpful. But how is the shortage impacting the snowplow operations?
Due to the statewide shortage of truck drivers, we're experiencing this staffing shortage. Currently, we are 34 drivers short. We've been 30 to 40 drivers short for about three to four years because we're competing with the private sector that can pay more annually and offer annual bonuses or sign-on bonuses. This shortage impacts the manpower we have to address any storms and snow removal. The Road and Bridge Division is currently responsible for snow removal on over 3,000 lane miles of paved roads and over 650 lane miles of gravel road in the unincorporated areas of Jefferson County. Just to put that in perspective real quick, that's from here to Tampa, Florida and back. So that's a lot of roads we must cover. Our mission statement and the purpose of our snow removal procedures is to provide safety to the traveling public through the efficient use of manpower and equipment. We're dedicated to keeping Jeffco safe. We ask that the community be patient and understand, understanding as we work through these staffing shortages.
If someone would like to apply to be a CDL driver, how, how can they learn more about that position?
Qualified individuals with a Class B commercial driver's license and at least one year of experience are encouraged to join our team. Visit the Jeffco Career Opportunities website to apply. We do offer training to help those interested obtain licensing and complete snow removal training.
Perfect. Good. Mr. Montoya, do you want to add anything?
Thank you, Commissioner. I would also like to point out that we have very strong supervisors in our Road and Bridge team, which make it easy to work with. They're positive and create a great working environment. So we encourage everybody who's interested in becoming a snowplow driver to visit our website and apply for a position. Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you. So if, just want to remind everybody, if you have a question, please submit it in the chat. And so now let's take some more time to address questions and concerns from the Jeffco community. Amber.
Thank you, Commissioner Crafttharp. We have a question here for Commissioner Dahl Kimper. What is your vision for using 1A funds for fire mitigation and response?
Thanks so much for the, the question. You know, we're very fortunate in Jefferson County to have terrific leaders through our emergency management team. We have a fire management officer through Jeffco Sheriff's Office. Jeffco Open Space does tremendous work in terms of forest health and mitigation. We, we always work very hard to balance public safety, keeping our community safe from catastrophic wildfires. Our fire chiefs often say it's not a matter of if, it's an issue of when. We also want to balance that with the love that we have for our Jeffco Open Space trails and making sure that everyone is having a good trail experience as well. So we look at it from a couple of different perspectives. We know that there's no one silver bullet to reducing wildfire risk. Some would say, well, if you just harden homes, that will take care of the issue. Or if you just create defensible space, those are two very important solutions, but they're part of a, a much larger comprehensive strategy. And we work closely with those individuals I mentioned just a moment ago. I also chair the Jeffco Wildfire Commission, and we have some tremendous experts on that commission who help us look forward to how we can best serve our community in Jefferson County. I also serve on the Colorado Fire Commission, and Jeffco has a voice at the state level as well. So lots of work is happening on that front. We would, as I mentioned earlier, also engage our community, the Jeffco Wildfire Commission, and the experts that we work with in Jefferson County and also across the state as many of us are dealing with similar kinds of issues, even including firefighter recruitment and retention, sustainable sources of funding. We're, we're so grateful for our Jeffco voters for allocating funds for wildfire. And it's, it's the first step toward having a sustainable funding as we tackle this issue. It's a big one too. So we look forward to talking with our community more on it as well.
Thank you, Commissioner Dahl Kimper. Another question for you all. How can the community stay involved in the budget process or communicate with county commissioners?
Thank you. This is Commissioner Kerr again. So what we're doing right here, right now, participating in these telephone town halls, we have at least four of these each year. All the commissioners are engaged in a variety of town halls throughout Jefferson County. I know up in Westminster and Arvada, Wheat Ridge, we do them up in the mountains, Lakewood Town Halls, up, up and down the Front Range here in Jefferson County. We do a wide variety of these. And also there are a variety of boards and commissions that people can be, can be a part of. We have, in fact, just earlier today, we were doing some approvals of folks to be on our Budget Advisory Committee and our Audit Committee and, and various other boards and commissions, some of which have to do with, with the budgeting process and, and helping our constituents understand the, the budgeting process and give input into the budgeting process. So all, all of these are, are different ways. We want to make sure that we are being as open and transparent, that we are answering questions. And of course, folks are always welcome to reach out to us. You can send an email to all three commissioners@commission@jeffco.us. That's C-O-M-M-I-S-H@jeffco.us, commish@jeffco.us. That email will, will go to all three commissioners and of course, all of the, the staff that you've heard from this evening. We do have, we have lots of folks whose job it is, is to make sure that information is easy for you to find and that you can communicate with your elected officials and our staff.
Thanks, Commissioner Kerr. This next question is for BK. Just asking you to talk about how the rising cost of materials, de-icing materials affects Road and Bridge.
So as we mentioned in our phases, I know the cul-de-sac question came up earlier. We base that as well on the, the cost of ice slicer, our main material, we, de-icing material we use. That is over $141 a ton. One truckload you see that's out on the road, that's almost $1,700 of material in that mix. So we work strongly with our, our vendors to restock our materials in the summer when we get a little cost break. So to try and bring costs down.
Thanks for that, BK. And I also wanted you to touch on, I know we spoke about how during snowstorms, all of the drivers are out, everyone's out, and you said you all have automated a message for people calling to see where, where or when you guys will be on their roads. Can you kind of expand on that?
Yeah. So in severe storms, we do put an automated message out because everyone is out plowing roads. Those are monitored, monitored throughout the storm. As I talked about earlier as well, Jeffcom can get ahold of us directly to respond to any emergency situations.
Thank you. And our next question is, how do you prioritize which roads and bridges get repaired first?
So we have an asset management system called Cartograph. Every couple of two to three years, we have our roads driven and assessed. Not to get too deep into it, but there's a deterioration curve on each road segment that gives it a score basically from zero to 100. It's also my responsibility to manage that road network on which roads we overlay, maintain, do repairs on. So that helps us greatly.
Thanks, BK. Our next question is asking about the status of the Quarry Fire burn area. Many people wanting to know when will those parks and trails reopen?
Thank you. This is Commissioner Kerr again, and I actually just took a hike on some of the closed trails with our open space folks. And we were, we were taking a look at that, and I had some questions along this as well. One of the things about the Quarry Fire was that it was 100% within Jefferson County open space. It was, it didn't go onto private land. It didn't go on to, for the most part, right of ways of, of roads. It was completely within our open space. And from, from the standpoint of coming back and, and making sure that the restoration is done, it, that's actually an advantage if it's all within one, one jurisdiction like that. But one of the, one of the very popular trails I'm trying to, is it the Black Bear Trail? I think it might be the Black Bear Trail that a lot of the, the folks right in that neighborhood use a lot. That, that is still closed and, and will be closed for quite a while because for two reasons. Towards the upper part of that trail, the fire actually reached the trail and there is some varying degrees of severe burns in the vegetation and in some place it did, it did burn down into the soil and had a heavy impact in the soil. So lower down, they actually had some bulldozer tracks and the firefighters did some, had some tracks to make sure that the, the fire would not expand into places where, where there are homes. And as you probably know, we had over 600 homes were evacuated for the Quarry Fire. And many folks were, were evacuated for, for the better part of a week or so. It's going to take quite a bit of restoration. Our open space folks are working with our forestry managers. They're working with the, the firefighters and, and other folks who are, who are experts in this area, mapping out the vegetation that was there, mapping out previous burns. And there were, there were some areas very, actually within the park that had been burned within the last 10 years. And just making sure that the vegetation and the soil are able to come back at a timetable that Mother Nature sets. And our open space directors don't set that, or, or forest rangers don't set that. That is a timetable that, that Mother Nature will, will set.
Thank you, Commissioner Kerr. Our next question is, where are we in the Together Jeffco process?
Well, we have Val Montoya with us, who has been leading Together Jeffco along with a tremendous team, including our county attorney's team, planning and zoning. And we've been getting a lot of community input along the way. Where are we at, Val?
Thank you for the question. Together Jeffco, as a reminder, is a combination of several plans that we're updating. That includes our comprehensive plan, our transportation plan, our CWPP, and an evacuation annex. Two of those plans have been approved. Those include the CWPP and the evacuation annex. The other two plans are still under development. I encourage everybody to take a look at our website, togetherjeffco.com and follow along. We will be having upcoming public engagement events probably in January to March timeframe. So we encourage everybody to join us. Thank you.
Val, thanks so much to you and the team and so many others who've been involved in this work. We were excited as the Board of County Commissioners to recently approve the County Wildfire Preparedness Plan. That was huge. And we updated that plan. We also extended the Wildland Urban Interface here in Jefferson County to 91%, and we know that will have a positive impact moving forward, especially as we're looking at potential grants to help us reduce wildfire risk here in the county. So thanks again to everyone involved and special shout out to our fire management officer who is engaged in leading the CWP in particular, Brian Keating.
All righty, our next question is, if there's an emergency in my area, how will I be notified?
This is Commissioner Kerr, and I'm going to see if I, we have these cards on Lookout Alert, and they have a QR code on them, which I don't think you're going to be able to get off, off what we have. I'm taking a picture of it right now and I'll, I'll try and put it out there on Facebook for you. But register at lookoutalert.co. That's lookoutalert.co. And this is a program we have here in Jefferson County that will call you and let you know when there is an emergency, something happening in your area. And it will still, it will, it will tell you what, it covers natural and man-made disasters, severe weather, and evacuation or shelter in place orders. There's more detail on all of this, but again, that's lookoutalert.co. Need to say, or anything else I should, I know different jurisdictions use different alert systems, but this is the one that Jefferson County is using. And so we, we encourage everyone in Jeffco to be a part of it.
Thank you, Commissioner Kerr. Our next question is for Commissioner Dahl Kimper. Can you explain why open spaces cutting down trees at some of the mountain parks?
Thank you so much for the question. And, and this really comes back to efforts to better manage our forests, to ensure forest health, also thinking always first and foremost about community safety as well as the trail experience that so many visitors to Jeffco and Jeffco residents, including myself and, and other commissioners enjoy so much on our trails. You know, the, the forest may appear healthy, but due to a century of fire suppression, most of the seedlings that would have been removed by frequent wildfires were allowed to remain, filling habitat openings and edges, creating the were allowed to remain filling habitat openings and edges, creating the dense and relatively unhealthy forests we have today. And what happens when you've got trees that are so close together and so tall is you, you have fires that burn hotter and faster. We know that's happening in large part due to climate change, drier conditions and more. And we get fires laddering up the branches, literally climbing up the branches of those trees, crowning in the trees and then throwing embers as much as a mile off. It's very hard to fight those fires. However, when we add more space in between trees, we can, we see fires that are slower burning that stay lower to the ground and ultimately are far more healthy for the forests in the long term, for habitat, wildlife and more. So that's some of the thinking behind the work that we're doing. I want to point out that since 2020, 3.6% of Jeffco Open Space forested land has been treated. That's the equivalent of nearly 900 acres. Jeffco is, Jeffco Open Space is very strategic and thoughtful in terms of how it focuses on mitigating our forests, including, uh, considering evacuation routes, nearby schools and homes, water resources, huge issue, uh, as well as community assets. And we do keep in mind, please know, community feedback. We know that, um, you very much value your trail experience. So as we move forward with mitigation efforts, we're leaving trees a little thicker along the trail. Uh, we're also always considering wildlife and vegetation and habitat. Uh, so leaving a little bit more of that, um, in the mix as well. And we're focusing on, um, stands of trees and, and grouping those trees. And that's especially important when we have some wind events as well. So keep that feedback coming and, and we very much appreciate the question.
Thank you, Commissioner Dahl Kimper. Our next question for the commissioners. Why did the county shut down Lookout Mountain Road overnight?
Uh, thank you for that question. Uh, so we, uh, our open space, which, uh, the, it's open space primarily, uh, on the front side of Lookout Mountain there as the Lookout Mountain Road, uh, goes, goes up the mountain. Uh, that is primarily going through Jefferson County open space. Once you pass the, uh, houses. Quite a few of the constituents who live in the, uh, houses at the bottom of Lookout Mountain have for years, been dealing with issues up on Lookout Mountain, up on the road of, uh, people shooting guns, uh, playing loud music and, um, and then coming down that road late at night, uh, unsafely. And so our constituents, uh, who, who live there at the bottom of Lookout Mountain asked that, um, uh, something be done. And it was, uh, looked at that because, uh, everywhere else, Jefferson County open space parks are not open, uh, sundown to sunup. Uh, this is the only place you can, uh, really drive through, uh, uh, an open space park uh, during that timeframe. And, uh, so many safety concerns were happening, uh, at night that it was decided to put up a gate, um, uh, the top of where the homes are, uh, at the bottom of Lookout Mountain and then also towards the top. And that the Jeffco Open Space Parks, uh, those gates would be shut between, uh, sundown and sun up to, uh, alleviate those, uh, those late night safety concerns.
Thank you, Commissioner Kerr. The next question we have is, what steps are being made to improve the county's infrastructure to withstand severe weather such as flood management, building codes and road maintenance?
Well, I don't know if you'd like to, uh, join us. Um, I know that this is certainly an issue that we're always looking at. And I think it's certainly going to be a part of our conversations as we think about those 1A dollars that are specifically targeted for infrastructure. Do you have any comments on this one?
Uh, yes, generally, um, we have a good understanding of, uh, the needs of our road network system and our drainage facilities. Uh, it totals about $630 million of investments we need to make over the next 20 plus years. And so we're in the process of prioritizing those. And we're hoping that the 1A dollars will help us achieve, uh, improving that infrastructure.
Thanks so much, Avell.
You're welcome.
And the next question is, how often are emergency preparedness drills conducted to ensure county staff and emergency services are ready for severe weather? And we have Nate coming down to answer that question.
So we meet quarterly, um, in a variety of different, uh, mechanisms to train and test different plans and policies that we have within Jefferson County. Um, not only specific to severe weather, but a myriad of different types of events, uh, this last quarter, actually last week. Uh, County Emergency Operations Center staff along with our local emergency managers from Lakewood, um, Arvada, uh, R1 schools all met and went through a cybersecurity event, um, kind of plan and exercise. But we try to meet once a quarter, review the plans, kind of go through it, make sure everybody's on board. And then once a year, we try to either do a functional exercise or do a full-scale exercise, which we will be facilitating with the Jefferson County Incident Management Team, uh, this summer in Evergreen, Colorado.
Thank you, Nate. And we have just a few minutes left, so we're going to begin wrapping up. Commissioner Dahl Kimper, any closing remarks?
Oh, thanks so much, Amber. I was, I was looking at that question list to see if we had any other, uh, ones to respond to. This is perfect. Thank you so much. Uh, I, I just want to thank all of you for joining us tonight as well as members of our county team who are here to help us field questions from our community. Thank you all for participating in tonight's telephone town hall. Please know that your input is valuable to us as we make decisions. It certainly informs the decisions that we make, um, on behalf of the county with our team. And we encourage you to continue to participate in these conversations. Moving forward, we talked a lot about 1A. There'll be opportunities to participate in that issue and lots of other issues moving forward. Thanks so much for being with us.
Commissioner Craftarpe, your final thoughts?
Thank you. Uh, just want to say thank you to everyone for listening to our telephone town hall. And if we didn't answer your question or if you have further questions or thoughts, please do contact us. Commissioner Kerr.
Great. Thank you. And again, a, a big thank you to everyone who participated. Our constituents with all of your great questions and also, uh, our staff here, uh, to, to help, uh, fill in the, uh, the details that, uh, helped answer those great questions. So, uh, thanks, everyone.
Thank you, Commissioner Kerr. Thank you, commissioners. And again, if we didn't get to your question or comment, please send us an email at jeffcopublicaffairs@jeffco.us to find a recording of tonight's conversation and the topics discussed. Or if you have any further questions, please visit our website, Thanks for joining us and have a great evening.